Are you anxious?
It's a long agenda.
Well, there we go. Call the meeting order. Welcome everyone here this evening. It's seven public hearings tonight. So here I am. I had planned on not being here, but when I realized it was seven, I figured maybe I should do my duty. Anyway, having said that, I would, the meeting being called to order, I would ask for approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand and motion carries. Thank you. Okay, first one, TA 202201 Downtown Building Regulations. Michael?
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor. To provide a bit of an overview tonight, as the mayor indicated, there are going to be seven public hearings tonight, five of which are text amendments and two are dealing with the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study and then budget schedule amendment to implement that schedule. The first of which is the downtown facade regulations. There'll be A, new art-related uses, the pawn shop vape shop and tobacco and CBD shops, use regulations for those, design regulations for auto-oriented businesses, and then corrections to the Unified Development Ordinance. Each of these are regular regulations currently or proposed regulations in our Unified Development Ordinance that would be amended, which in accordance with state statute does require a public hearing as well as recommendation from the planning board. We'll also be hearing tonight about Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study. This study will provide details on how we can fund future park improvements and finally a budget fee amendment. To start out, downtown building facade regulations, these regulations are to, are would be a new regulation specifically to allow for staff review of modifications to the buildings within the downtown core zoning district. This would include color design changes, minor modifications. It'll be making sure that the proposed changes are keeping with the character of our district. Part of the reason for this is there are a lot of movements across the country to create really, really big eye-catching. As example, the Heidenberg Project in Detroit, Michigan. Additionally, some downtowns are actually focusing on these bright, bold, very loud colors to attract visitors as a tourist opportunity, such as Yazoo City, Mississippi. And even HGTV has taken this approach with their renovation of a small town in Wapika, Alabama, where they went through and painted each of the buildings a different color. While the colors independently might not be too loud, it does create a very loud appearance. Whereas our downtown, keeping the colors and the context more so in with the nature of our historic downtown, where we still allow for colors, as you probably saw in the recent renovations of Michael Germano's building, where it was not a very loud color, but he did introduce accent colors. On the flip side, the colors that Brandon McCrane painted for the distillery, while that black color might be putting off in certain situations, the way that he presented it was very classy and it's still in keeping with the context of our downtown. The other option, when possible, if the brick is still in good shape, trying to encourage business owners to keep the brick in place. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Question from, let's say, the Board of Commissioners first. Planning Board. Okay. I know. Do you have anything else? Okay. Any question, any comments from the general public, either for or against or just in general? Okay. We'll close that public hearing and refer the matter to the planning board. Next is TA 2201B.
Okay, the second of the text amendments tonight is specifically to art-related uses. As we're going through the Unified Development Ordinance, we realize that there is two uses that really should be included specifically within our downtown, but elsewhere within the town, that were silent within our regulations. We do allow for art galleries as an accessory use to other uses within town, but not as a standalone use. So the proposed text amendments would introduce art galleries and artisan studios as two independent uses and would be permitted in the neighborhood commercial, general commercial, heavy commercial. Artisan studios would also be in the campus industrial. And then both of those would be in office and institutional, downtown core, downtown periphery, as well as allowable in planned developments. Part of the reason for this is these uses are able to go into existing buildings with very low up or upfit. Typically, they're community gathering spaces, such as Stroke of Genius Paint Canvas and Wine Studio in Waukesha, Wisconsin. Or we had a pottery shop for here for a while, Old Town Artisan Studios in California. Also, there's opportunities for this to become an educational opportunity, such as the Corner Store and Artisan Market in Flemington, Pennsylvania, where they not only sell artisan merchandise, but they also have rotating artists come in to teach others how to create the products that they sell in the store. There's a sculpture and studio gallery in Zanesville, Ohio, that takes it to another level. Not only do they work with clay, but they also do mixed materials, sometimes steel, paper mache, and it's an institution where folks can go and learn to do these different trades. But it doesn't have to be just your necessary mediums of paper and paint and clay. Etta and Billy Soap Talks in San Francisco, California, is an example, where they make artisan soaps. They have a production-style process and they produce onsite for onsite retail sales, but also distribute to the neighboring communities as well. Similar, Bailey Builds out of Duluth, Minnesota, they take scrap lumber, things that would typically end up in landfill, and make these wonderful tapestries. You can see one in the back here. And they not only produce these, but they also teach others how to do these. These are the types of artist stu-, or artisan studios that would be able to go into some of the vacant buildings within downtown and create new opportunities, new vibrancy, to have increased pedestrian traffic within our downtown. And once again, I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. Try to streamline this. Any questions from either board?
Yeah, so my only question, I guess, may be a comment, is I want to make sure that these buildings are updated to meet the minimum requirements of the current building code, existing building code. So they would have to come back. They can't go into a vacant building without plumbing that works, without electrical that works. They'd have to come up and meet the minimum standards of the existing building code.
That's correct. They'll have to meet the minimum health, safety requirements.
Yep.
But in terms of outfit, they're not going to have to put in extra walls, those type of things.
Yeah.
Unless it's closing off the bathroom.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So basically, yeah, okay.
Other questions or comments?
I have a quick one. Oh, go ahead, Larry.
Have you had any inquiries from any artist or anybody thinking about locating downtown?
Yes. Pre-COVID, there was somebody who was just kind of kicking the tires. Specifically, it was a small-scale woodworker that was making custom signs using CNC machines. And they were just exploring the opportunities at that point in time. And we said that we'd get back to them, give them a call back, and they said that they were no longer interested.
Okay, thank you.
I was just curious on why the campus industrial?
Because, let me go back, a lot of those type of situations, the opportunity for an educational aspect of it. We do have a fairly large employer coming in that would be in a heavy industrial district, but one of their models is a smaller model where they teach individuals how to do these type of things, specifically when it comes to the electrical trades. Looking at similar uses where it's, the threshold is where they're not going to be able really meet the intent and purpose to mitigate the noise, vibration, or smell for the neighboring communities, that's where a campus industrial would be a better fit for them.
Okay. But there's also a size limitation of 5,000 square feet. In a campus industrial setting, are there spaces even available for 5,000 square feet or less?
There can be, yes. In tech flex operations, where you have multiple tenant spaces within a single building, a lot of communities, specifically within Wake County, are seeing increased numbers of these as small startups are going into those to hit the ground running and then moving into a larger thing, or a larger space. Think kind of along the lines of the industrial version of the coworking space that just opened here in downtown.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so if you're looking at page 41 of the information that you handed out to us, on page 40, under D and E is where the new regulations for, or the new verbiage for the art gallery and the artisan studio are located. But then under G, or what will be G, it's addressing automotive sales?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the, I probably apologize, I should have explained this. With text amendments, every time you make a text amendment within a section, it affects other sec-, or session, sections of the ordinance. So the pages that you received is a screenshot. In the event that everything gets approved, then it makes a lot easier for staff to go in and make those modifications. If things are not approved, then we go back in and deny those regulations or those modifications. So that, we'll be discussing part D in a little bit. I believe that is under part E of the text amendments.
So this particular section G is just different for another one that we're dealing with tonight?
That is correct. You'll notice that there's changes to F, G, or sorry, F, G, and H.
Right. But that's coming later?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Other questions? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing done. Close that hearing, refer the matter to the planning board, and we'll open TA 202201C.
Okay, part C is in response to some concerns that we've had regarding the concentration of certain uses within downtown, specifically vape shops, tobacco shops, and CBD shops. In looking at comparable uses that have similar economic impacts, we've discovered that pawn shops can have that same economic impact. So the, we propose creating two new uses, a pawn shop and then a separate use of vape, tobacco, and CBD shop, being that those products typically are sold all in the same entity, having them permitted in several zoning districts by right, as well as allowed within our planned development. In looking at how it would affect other, or how it affects other communities, we've discovered that the town of Zebulon has one pawn shop and three vape, tobacco, or CBD shops. It's worth noting that the definitions that are being proposed in section 9.4 are actually definitions that came from a combination sources from the American Planning Association. So they're not something that I made up or that I just found from a neighboring community, but these are definitions that were defined by, defined and potentially litigated in other places.
Now, we have, you're talking about just in the downtown corridor. You're not talking about three vape shops in all of this town of Zebulon, because there are more than three?
That is correct. This is specifically for downtowns.
Okay.
Apex, as an example, has, or sorry, with the exception of Fuquay Varina, no other communities have a pawn shop within their downtown. Couple have them outside, Holly Springs, you'll note that asterisk, they do have both vape shop and a pawn shop that are just outside of their corporate limits. Apex has one vape shop in downtown. Wake Forest has one, I think it's a tobacco and CBD shop. Wendell has a CBD shop in downtown, whereas other communities have one, we have three. In terms of the regulations, how is this going to look? We mapped these out. The radiuses are shown here are 300 feet. The vape, tobacco, and CBD shops are highlighted in yellow, and these are the location of the front doors, so it'd be the walking, or the distance from the front doors. And then the blue dot there in the middle is the existing pawn shop. So you could see that we would be able to have multiple of these businesses within downtown. However, the existing radiuses would prevent any new ones from coming into our downtown. The, either the vape or the pawn shop that are located next door to each other would become non-conforming at this point in time. And I'm available if you have any questions regarding these regulations.
Questions from either board?
I had a question. Should we include medical uses as something that they should not be in proximity to, just for the fact that if there is an emergency and I see the fire department trying to get out and then people are gathering around some of these spaces, could there become a traffic issue, I guess, is what I'm thinking about?
The traffic impact is not something that I've studied that's interesting?
Because I see a lot of people come in and out, you know, they come in for two minutes, they run back out, you know? And so if there's a constant stream of those cars, I wonder what kind of impact that has if there's an emergency vehicle that needs to get through there and people are constantly coming in and out of the store. That's like that because it's not something you go in and stay for, is my concern.
Yeah, that would have to be something I'd have to invest, or investigate a little bit more, as well as maybe speak with Chief Perry to see if the location across from our existing fire station is having traffic impacts on the exit of their trucks.
Okay.
And if necessary, that could always come back as a future text amendment.
Other question?
Yeah, I have some, so.
Go ahead.
Both of these are, all of my questions pertain to both sections, the pawn shops and the vape, tobacco, and CBD shops. So you had said that the two that are right next door to each other would be non-conforming. What does that mean for them?
That means they can continue in their existing operation indefinitely, but if one of them closes for a period of more than 30 days, absent any national global pandemics or anything like that, any new uses or activities would need to be in conformance with our Unified Development Ordinance.
Okay.
I think it's 30 days. It might be six months. I'll have to review that.
Okay.
Essentially, they could continue operations in the existing configuration. We can't retroactively impose this, being it's a Unified Development Ordinance regulation.
Okay. And then item B talks about metal gates, similar elements that are not permitted in front of or behind windows.
Mm-hmm.
Is that even possible with those types of shops? My opinion is if they remove gates and any kind of protection, security, that that is now going to become a possible nuisance for our police.
That was my initial thought as well. However, upon research, the criminal element to rob these is actually fairly low, namely because the amount of security, cameras, and everything else, the steps that they take is very extensive. But yeah, I was really surprised to see that the crime stats for these were fairly low.
Okay.
Convenience stores, those type of things were far more attractive nuisances.
And then the lastly, item C, all of these things shall be approved by the planning director. So we're leaving it down to one person to make all the decisions, and it's nothing against you, I'm just saying I have a problem leaving it down to one person to make all of these decisions regarding the building appearance.
That language is pretty consistent throughout the Unified Development Ordinance. In other locations, it may say planning director or they're designee, for example, the acceptance of a fee in lieu in certain situations. And there's a process where if somebody does not agree with my interpretation, they can go through and appeal it to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
There's always a check and balance.
Because this includes like the paint colors and all that kind of stuff, so you're basically approving how our downtown looks, or any future planning director is approving how our downtown looks solely?
Well, I hope there's not a different planning director in the nearby. Yes, essentially, and most of us have gone through necessary qualifications to review that. As an example, I have a minor in art and design.
As I said, nothing against you, sir.
But as far as my understanding is, we've already finished the public hearing on the building appearances?
This would not just be applicable for the downtown, but for everywhere in town.
But are we not talking about the vape shops right now?
The, if you look at section 4.3.5 JJ and UU, subsection 2C indicates specifically exterior building modifications. So let's say one of these is going to be going in over by Walmart.
So these are specific just for vape and tobacco?
That is correct.
And CBD shops? Okay.
Wouldn't it be best to say and is designee in the event of your absence, or the planning director's absence?
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that.
I think I would add that, because I, you know, I hope you don't get sick or extended leave or whatever, but you still carried the title, let's say. Then we would have to have, they would have to appoint an interim. But anyway, it seems it would help it to be manageable if you had that language in there.
Yeah, that's a very easy amendment to add.
Yeah. Other questions?
Mike and Mayor Sam over here. We'll double-check that because it might be the planning director's defined term throughout the UDO that includes, a lot of times that word means, kind of refers to the whole department. So we'll double-check. It might be that it's defined to include the designees.
As long as we have that flexibility.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what, I don't care how it says it, it locks, has it in there. Okay. Others from either board?
Yes. So how was the radius of 300 feet determined?
We looked at the block lengths to determine what would take to allow for approximately one of these per block. And it's based primarily on the location of existing ones. If you go to that slide.
So there's, if some of these uses were to shutter, then technically we could have two on the same, I guess we couldn't have two on the same block with how that is.
No, you would not be able to have two in the same block.
But you could still have more than one downtown?
That's correct. You could still potentially have more than one downtown.
Now, does this take into consideration, because I know that you're also, I believe, not supposed to be, according to this, 300 feet from a, or with an approximation to a park? And I'm assuming that the activated alleyway would be considered such? And so that's going to make this map a little bit different?
That would change that map. So right here, there would be another circle, one of these style circles, and I, you can see a little bit of an overlap here, so that might just clip this one and the pawn shop.
Okay.
If they've been vacated?
I'm sorry?
If they leave, that's correct.
Right, but even if they didn't, the park on, in the alleyway would need to be added to this?
Yeah, no, I get that. Only thing I was saying is that the existing businesses are grandfathered.
Right, right. And if a building were to, if a business were to shutter, that was a vape shop for, let's just say it was the 30 days, but then they, another business can't come in, it has to be that same business reopening within the 30 days? Or is that usage attached to the building? And if another business that is the same use comes in, for example, another CBD shop or vape shop in a location that just recently had one close, is that then an allowable use?
If it's a like-for-like replacement within the required time period for non-conforming, then it can reestablish as long as it's a like-for-like use.
But it's, even if it's a different business entity?
Even if it's a different business, because the use itself would be reestablished within that short window. Outside of that window, chapter seven of our UDO would require, which deals with nonconformities, would have to come into compliance if it's outside that window. I want to say it's 30 days, it's either 30 days or six months. I need to clarify that.
Mike, if we go by and look at 160D, they would require a permit for a change of use or a change of tenant. If we go by that standard, why would they not be held to the same, I guess, criteria as if you're going to change a tenant, you have to get a building permit or a permit in general? Why would a business be able to change ownership if they've gone, I guess, dormant for a extended period of time and a new owner came in? That would still require permitting. So wouldn't that be a threshold that we could use as saying, that's the cutoff? If you come in and whatever you're doing requires a permit and a change of tenant would, then at that point, they're no longer able to reuse that space?
There are stipulations within 160D that does allow for the re-establishment of the same use regardless of tenant ownership.
Regardless. Okay, okay.
Seems to me that that would also allow someone to sell their business.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I guess the intent is to make sure that we don't oversaturate the downtown with vape shops or pawn shops. But if we already have identified that we are oversaturated and we continue to allow them, and I guess if 160D is giving an exception for that, then we don't really have much of a choice. But I think we would want to make it as difficult as possible for a continuing nonconformity in a downtown area. And then I guess another question I have is, is why did we establish the radius? Why didn't we establish the zoning district as our threshold? So we don't want more than one vape shop or pawn shop in the downtown district rather than 300 square, or 300 feet?
The question with that is where does the one come from? What is the rational justification? Where the 300 feet is rational justification because of the distance in proximity to the impact on the economic values of surrounding properties? By 300 feet, you're a block out, so the impact is, the economic impact for the property values is substantially less at that radius.
Okay. I mean, I could see it both ways, because, I mean, I could honestly say that that's an arbitrary number, because we're saying a block here is a block different somewhere else, right? But, you know, we could also say that the downtown core has specific economic value, whereas if you go into the periphery, or if you go onto some other area, that's a different economic value. So if we can, we can start to play that game either way. I just want to make sure that we're making the decision that we feel best as a town to accomplish that. And if we're super set on 300 feet is the right answer, then that's fine, but I think maybe we want to explore that a little bit more, maybe you already have, but that's just kind of what I thought was, maybe we will have a criteria some other way.
Yeah, and ultimately, we can, if necessary, we can explore that further as well.
Other questions?
So why, I can understand why you would say we don't want to have like businesses or like uses within a certain radius, but under JJ Pawn Shops, you also say that it has to be 300 feet from tobacco shops as well?
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain that a little bit further? Because I believe that it's this, it is, it's the same with UU. So you're kind of lumping pawn shops and tobacco shops. So you're kind of lumping pawn shops and tobacco shops. You're, why are they kind of similarly lumped together there?
Because they have the same economic impacts on the surrounding property values.
Okay, how is that, how was, how was that determined?
There was a study done by the American Planning Association back in, I want to say it was 2015, about uses that had negative impact economic values. Bail bonds was another example that was included. But typically, those were concentrated near courthouses. They looked at those uses and in relation to the separation distances, which as I mentioned at the work session, were established by young versus mini theaters, which was specific to adult uses, where at that point, they realized they couldn't exclude them entirely from certain districts, because the economic impact was based on the concentration of these uses, as opposed to just these uses independently. And so that's where this rationale came from.
So we couldn't say increase the radius to 400 feet because of the study that the American Planning Association did?
No, the study is specific to our block lengths. We could increase it if necessary. But the concentration question of why is it 300 feet from vape shops to pawn shops? That's where that rationale came from.
Okay.
If necessary, that number could be increased.
Okay.
Yeah, I've still sort of hung up on vape to pawn to churches to whatever, when I can understand vape to vape, for example, B3, 400 feet, whatever. It just, you know, it concerns me that at some point, you could come back, not you, but, and say, well, laundries can't be next to breweries. The hardware stores can't be next to hair salons. I mean, that sort of thing bothers me a bit, and maybe I just need to suck it up and get through it. But, you know, I know that we did separate homes from, not individual homes, but home care type businesses had to be separated by, I can't remember now, half mile maybe?
Yes, it was a half mile. Another use that we have that separates is the games of skill. It's required to have a quarter mile distance, and that's where the schools, daycares, religious institutions, parks, adult uses, net club or dance hall, pool hall, all of those are repeated language from what we require for separations from games of skill.
Yeah, well, I just put that out there that it's still, I'm having trouble getting over that hump. In some cases, in some cases, I get it, but.
And that games of skill.
And something in history tells me that it might be six months and not 30 days.
I think you might be right.
So need to look that up and be sure that we understand that before a final decision is made.
Absolutely.
That's all I have. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, six months. Thank you, I appreciate that.
What?
Sam looked it up, it is six months in our UDO.
Six months, okay. Yeah, there was something else that was six months that was ringing in my head, so I was thinking that it would be something. Okay, other questions, comments? Okay, any comments from the general public? It's not, closed public hearing, further matter to the Planning Board, and we will open TA 202201D Design Regulation.
Okay, this one, I'll try to make this one a little bit more fun. Right now, our regulations, when it comes to auto-dominated uses, really allow for almost anything. It allows for garage doors to be facing right up to the street. It allows for drive-throughs to be fully visible. It does have location requirements regarding drive-through windows and menu boards. They couldn't be in the front of the building, but otherwise, it's pretty silent. The proposed regulations would promote a mixed-use style design. So the building on the right, that is something that we could end up with here in Zebulon based on our current regulations. Same thing with something like this. Highland Park, California, received national news because it was recognized as the ugliest Starbucks in the country. And this was a brand-new building. So Starbucks, they went through, looked at several design options. I don't have the replacement design, I was unable to find that. But Starbucks has done a lot better in other locations, kind of like this. This is a two-story urban-style location, obviously part of a much larger building. But here's an example of a standalone building that still has a drive-through located on the side. It's also two-story, where you might have the Starbucks down here, and this might be an entirely different use. In this particular context, it is all Starbucks, all being used for that. Personally, I'm a fan of Tim Hortons being from the north, and Buffalo, New York actually took it upon themselves to adopt similar regulations to what's being proposed now. And as a result, this Tim Hortons was constructed, where the building was constructed primarily for the coffee use, but they were able to find an upstairs tenant that helped offset the additional construction and architectural design costs. The context of this building are distinctively different than that building, yet they're both coffee shops. Let's change gears here and talk about McDonald's. McDonald's is notorious for saying, you have to build our corporate model. Okay, well, what about that? Or that? Or that? And of course, my favorite, that one in Freeport, Maine. The idea of McDonald's and all these big corporate entities coming in and demanding, you will build my corporate model, that's typically just their first shot. Before they go into a community, they have architectural option, one, two, three, four, and they'll go down the line based on what the municipality requires. Something like this is a McDonald's, that is a new prototype that they're exploring. This would actually meet the proposed regulations. However, something like this probably would be more practical, because it's still keeping in context with their modern platform. But if you removed the word McDonald's and the M logo on it, this could be a range of uses. And it really allows for adaptive reuse in the event that one of these changes over. Well, also, let's talk about auto repair facilities as an example, the Firestone over in Knightdale. They also have similar regulations to what we're proposing. You'll notice this view from the front is what faces Knightdale Boulevard. And then this faces the access row in the back. And you see all these garage doors here? They're actually located in the space that would be the least visually impacted for the community. This is that Firestone under construction. Because of the flow of traffic for Knightdale Boulevard, there's another building blocking the view, so obviously, they're not going to be putting the garage doors on this side. The traffic going this way would be able to potentially see them if it wasn't for the landscaping already in place. So by oriented building this direction, those garage doors have the least visual unpack on the building as much as possible. Not a bad-looking auto repair tire facility. But that's the back, that's the front of the building. This location is in Davidson, North Carolina. And you'll notice, it looks like several different tenant spaces, where you have the primary corner anchor, and then each of these looks like it could potentially be an independent tenant. Once again, if a use changed in this location, it allows for adaptive reuse. Several different businesses could go into this location. Additionally, you'll notice that it is two-story clear all the way up to the ceiling, and these windows provide natural light into the facility, so these tenant spaces could be independently broken up and potentially have two-story locations, or just a really, really tall one-story. The proposed regulations would be addressed for auto repair facilities, oil change places, as well as drive-through establishments. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions from either board?
So on here, you have financial service establishments, any banks, future banks or?
If they have a drive-through, that is correct.
And, so, does this limit or eliminate certain businesses or future businesses?
Uh-uh.
Not at all?
No.
A business coming to Zebulon goes, okay, well, I have this model that cost me, you know, a million dollars to build. But if I have to switch my design, it now costs me a million five, well, forget it, I'm not going to Zebulon, I'll go somewhere else.
I haven't had those conversations with anybody who's been kicking the tires yet. But in other situations from other municipalities, they've been able to comply with these standards. As an example, Tim Hortons Coffee Shop. You got to sell a whole lot of timbits and coffee to be able to afford something like this, but they were able to make the numbers work based on the realization of full occupancy of that building. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a true two-story either. You take a look at this building as an example in Knightdale.
As the appearance.
Just down the road, similar economic picture as we are. These windows up top are what's called spandrel glass. It's essentially a fake window. But the visual impact that it has on those walking or driving by is the exact same as if it was a true two-story.
And lastly, on all of these sections, you have new constructions shall conform to the mixed-use design, so on and so forth. So would that include what has recently happened with, like Pizza Hut or Smithfield's? They would then have to completely rip it down, they have to conform now to these standards? So if the, was the Quick Lube, is that what it's called? I don't know, the one right next to Victory? Yeah, so if they were to rebuild, for instance, they now have to come to this standard, they're not grandfathered in to the previous? Or do we need to say new construction or renovation?
If they're renovating the building, they could keep the existing configuration, but if that building is scraped from the site, then it goes into classification of new construction, in which case, they would have to meet the new regulations.
Is that defined somewhere, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions from either board? Okay, questions from the general public or comments? Alrighty, we'll close that public hearing and open TA 202201E.
Okay, I'm going to make this as fun as possible. This one is a lot of text amendments. All of these are corrections, either things that were missed in the initial review of the UDO, or addressing conflicts in the UDO. The first of which is require, or the regulations as it pertains to industrial setbacks. At one point in history, this is what everybody thought of as an industrial use, and it required a very large setback. This is Bethlehem Steel Plant in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, or it was something like this oil refinery in Alaska, where the impacts to the surrounding property values were substantial, and it required a greater setback. With all of our regulations in our ordinances, we realized that it was time to modernize them, and we started bringing all the buildings closer to the street. Unfortunately, the industrial districts were forgotten. However, this is what industrial looks like in the 21st century. Typically, it is automated manufacturing, where the noise, vibration, sound, odor is minimal, if any, that comes from the inside. And more so, this is typically what they look like on the outside. As you can see, the distance from the building to the street in this situation is very minimal. Take a look at some of the new industrial sites that have been built over in Knightdale as an example, where you have long linear buildings that are pulled up closer to the street with the parking in between. That creates the greatest level of option for flexibility. So staff is proposing to correct this by cutting that front setback in half to 25 feet. The next of the corrections is in terms of downtown residential uses. The statements for the downtown core district discourage residential living on the ground floor. That needs to be dedicated for retail, restaurants, and other business-oriented development. So we are looking to make sure that residential is preserved in this location as opposed to that location. The other component is, the design regulations that are associated with it could allow for something like this. So the text amendments to 4.2.3 would correct both of these situations. Auto dealerships is another situation where it's in conflict with other provisions in the ordinance. Our regulations for a lot of the commercial districts require 50% of the required parking to be located on the side or the back of the building, so you can only have a certain percentage, or not 50% of the required, 50% of the total can only be between the front of the building and the street. It does not reference display of auto dealerships. This is what we think of for a lot of auto dealerships, and yeah, this might be the easiest model for them, but this isn't the only model. This is a Chevy dealership in Birmingham, Alabama, where you notice, this is right up to the street. In this particular situation, they have the display lot off to the side as opposed to between the building and the street. And not to just focus on the Chevys, same thing with Ford. This one in Flushing, Michigan, as an example, has mostly a greenway or a green path in front that the property line is actually approximately there. That sign is fairly close, so the road can eventually expand. But as you can see from here, they do have a small display of vehicles immediately in front, and then the rest of them are located off to the side. Additionally, if you've seen some of the newer buildings, this is still consistent with the modern Ford prototype buildings. Institutional designs, there's no regulations right now in terms of how these institutional buildings are going to look. Unless they come before us for a special use or a conditional reason, staff has no ability to regulate anything. So right now, we could end up something like that, or something like that, or something like this, kind of reminds me of Star Wars, or my personal favorite, an office building in India. That would be fun. And it's not just office buildings, but it's also religious institutions. This is a cathedral located just outside of Kalamazoo, Michigan. When this was built, all the architects were thrilled with the design. But when it actually got to usability, people thought that it wasn't comfortable, it didn't feel right in the context. So they ended up having to hire a different architect and built a massive addition onto the building. You can still see the original cathedral off in the back here, but this is their new sanctuary and education center. The proposed regulations would require buildings be a little bit more like this, potentially for a religious institution. Two-story building, possibly more, different articulation, visual interest, or maybe something like this. So it creates a lot of opportunities while still allowing staff to do our job to make sure that we get the best possible architecture for the town of Zebulon. Mixed-use design standards, right now, within our downtown core district, it exempts the regulations. We could end up getting this in our downtown core, which is completely odd context, in character for the downtown, as a potential infill development. Whereas, once again, I like this picture, also, this one's in Philadelphia, actually, both of these are in Philadelphia, where the one on the left is more in keeping with the intent of what we're trying to do. Multi-family design standards, once again, specific to our downtown core, we could end up something like this. And this particularly gives me nightmares, because I spent my last year of college up in this corner right here, great views of Lake Superior, but it's not an attractive building for downtown Zebulon. It was also very, very expensive to rent one of those. Whereas, we'd be looking for something more like this, where it creates a mixed-use building that allows for non-residential on the first floor, and then multi-family on the second floor. The building on the left is actually all apartments on that second floor, and meets the purpose and intent of our downtown core zoning district. the purpose and intent of our downtown core zoning district. And finally, this is something that's caused problems. We do have regulations that are, require gas parking for single-family dwelling units at one-quarter space per dwelling unit, and each of those need to be within a quarter-mile walking distance of the location of those units. However, there isn't specific regulations on where those spaces need to be. This would define that they need to be either located on a designated on-street parking space that would be designed appropriately for the appropriate cross-section, or within an HOA common area, because right now, we have situations like this, where we have emergency service vehicles trying to get down some of these residential streets, and when you have lined spaces in particular locations, it actually discourages people from parking illegally in other parts of the neighborhood. Finally, last but not least, two spelling corrections regarding best management practices and major variance as it pertains to watersheds. Those spelling errors were correct as part of this package. And that's a whole lot to take in, but I'm available for any questions.
Questions from either board?
Yes, can you please explain where exactly those design standard changes are going to be located? Because when I look at section 5.3.1, all I see is under applicability, all of the red lines, and then the small insertion of the commercial design standards. Where do the commercial design standards find themselves?
If you look at, the bottom is page 19, the top of the page says TA 2022-01E. If you see under, excuse me, commercial designing exemptions, where we crossed out DTC and, and the LOH is a placeholder for a future local historic district in the event that we ever pursue that, you'll see a repeat on attachment eight under exemptions. It removes development within the DTC district. And same thing under attachment nine, C where it says exemptions, it's removed from there as well. So those design regulations pertain specifically to our downtown core, where right now, the ordinance, for some reason, exempts all the design regulations.
From the downtown core, so it's saying that they will, those exemptions will no longer apply to the downtown core?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mike, if we were, so you showed a lot of, let's say, contemporary-looking buildings for institutional, whether they be churches or whatnot. Every once in a while, you have somebody that wants to build a Gothic cathedral. I wanna make sure that we're still able to handle that within our UDO, based on these conversations.
Um, when, when those circumstances come about, that's one of the reasons we have the conditional zoning.
Okay.
Because if something is such a departure from our base regulations, it then creates a process which, just like this, it'd be a joint public hearing, and they'd be able to present the rationale on why they should be able to do that deviation.
Okay, yeah.
Also, in return, we'd be able to request alternative means of compliance, which could be screening from adjacent properties and such.
Gotcha, okay.
Other questions from either board?
Yeah, so all of these sections, you're cutting the setback to 25 feet from 50 feet. I can see that possibly working in a campus industrial type of setting, but you're telling me, in the light industrial, right off a green pace, it's only gonna be 25 feet from the road. So if these are, say, a storefront, sales room kinda thing with manufacturing warehouse in the back, there's 25 feet, where are people parking?
We, they'd park on the side, or there could be enough space. That's a minimum setback. So if a building owner chooses to go further back to have more parking up front, that's a possibility. This creates additional flexibility for the development community, and is still more in keeping with the intent of the other districts in the UDO. I also chucked with Fire Chief Perry about this in terms of the safety impacts, and he noted that the 50-foot setback does not provide any additional safety than the 25-foot would. Because I was thinking in the context of some of the more intensive uses, such as Numaco, Vinventions, those type of entities.
And we still have requirements for vegetation off of the road, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So there still is some blocking of that view right up on the road?
Yeah, we still require street trees and other vegetation, and if there's a parking lot, we have vegetative requirements for our parking lots as well.
Okay, that's all.
Other questions from either board? Okay, questions or comments from the general public? Okay, close that public hearing, or as a matter to the planning board, and open Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study.
Okay, please bear with me, I'm gonna hopefully get through this. Unfortunately, Sheila Long, our Parks and Recreation Director, was unable to join us tonight, so she kind of handed off the battalion to me to, with the instructions, please don't mess this up. So let's see what we can do here. As part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, it really looked at the future growth and expansion of our park system within Zebulon. And as part of that, looked at what is the cost associated with it. One of the options that came up amongst the focus groups in multiple input sessions was the possibility of an impact fee. Tonight, there's a, there's the presentation and possible recommendation from the planning board to accept that Parks and Recreation Impact Fee. The impact fee is specific to, as the town expands, the impacts from those new residents have on our Parks and Recreation Greenway facilities, the impacts are greater. So this looks at what is the cost of those impacts, specifically to provide new or expanded public capital facilities required to serve the development, or that particular development, and really maintain the existing high quality of service that our Parks and Recreation Plan, or our Parks and Recreation Department provides. All of this came out of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was adopted earlier this month, and it looked at the growth needs as the town grows, the Parks and Recreation System needs to grow as well, including four new neighborhood parks, expanded enhanced community parks, as well as looking at a variety of revenue sources to really make these things a reality. Because these, as you may recall from the Parks and Recreation Plan, are some very big taken items. They did a study based on what other municipalities had to maintain levels of service. It was all based on the goals and objectives of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and I should note that there is a modification with one of the calculations. The community center was double-counted, so there was a change on page 14 of the study, but it does not impact the intent or the end result. By 2030, they looked at what we would need to have in total to maintain our existing quality of service for our Parks and Recreation. In terms of parkland acquisition, it would require over 75 acres, and an estimated cost per acre is approximately $60,000. This is based on just under, sorry, just over .09, 0.09 acres per person. So that translates to approximate cost of almost $600 per person.
Can I ask a question right now? Is that all right? Okay. Because I'm very confused going through this, this whole study, and they've used the number of $60,000 per acre, but then they've applied it to the acreage that we already currently own, but they're using that to derive a number for each potential future citizen, and I'm, but we already own that acreage. And so why are we using the 76.4, or 76.24 acres instead of using what the projected future needed acreage to be?
That is the future projected acreage, is my understanding.
So we're going to need, okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And that $60,000, that is consistent with other recent land acquisitions in terms of the approximate cost per acre. So that translates to approximately just under $600 per person. Parkland development, this is the activation of the state, given the people the reason to go there. This could include, this could include things such as splash pads, playground equipment. They'd be looking for additional 35.3 acres, and the cost per developed land is approximately $100,000 an acre. Once again, translating into the cost associated per person for the maintaining of the level of service would come up to approximately $460 per person. Okay. Parks improvement, this is for the, more of the passive activation, approximately $92,000 for those improvements, per improvement. But this would be $2.5 million. This also includes other elements, apologies, I don't recall what Sheila told me with this one, but this cost is approximately $327 per person to maintain that existing level of service. Building space, this is the Aquatic Center, these are the improvements, potentially if the dream came true for the activation around Five County Stadium, the cost per square foot would be approximately $300, and that translates to a cost of $547 per person. So when you add all these up, it's a little under $2,000 a person. This is the maximum that the town would be able to obtain as part of Development Impact Fee. Looking at other sources, as well as what is the number of persons per dwelling unit? These are based on the 2020 census numbers, where it's approximately 2.7 persons per dwelling for a single-family detached, and then a multifamily is 2.37. The maximum we could require is 5,194 for a single-family. However, given other revenue sources and everything else, we are proposing an impact fee of $3,000 for a single-family detached and $2,500 for a multifamily. This would be adding to our current development fees, and one of the fees would go away, because it'd be replaced part of this. Right now, we do have transportation impact fees for a single-family as well as detached. We also have an existing Greenway impact fee. This would be replaced by the Parks and Recreation Fee. There's also recreation fees in Loop, which are part of the development process towards land dedication for either parks, schools, or other governmental uses such as a fire station for a potential expansion. But these are reviewed by, on a case-by-case example, and they don't necessarily have an impact on the total system. In terms of what others charge, we're fairly in keeping with a lot of the others. Wake Forest is an example, charges almost $3,700 for a single-family detached. Roseville, Apex, Raleigh, they'll have charges that are comparable to ours. Clayton is a little lower, but they have a different park dynamic than what we have. And then the legal authority would be granted, or is granted, under a local act, and I'm gonna turn this over to Sam to explain the local act that was approved.
See the slide.
Okay, and we're going through this entire process tonight, making sure that everything is done in accordance with the requirements of that local act. Tonight's the public hearing, after this, the planning board can make a recommendation, and then this will be coming back before you for the regular meeting for adoption of this study. And I'm available if you have questions.
I do.
Hopefully, I can answer.
I do. And you might not be able to answer this, but if you look at page 11, it says that the total acres that Zebulon has is 76.24. That is not the total acreage that we are planning on adding to Zebulon. And so I have, I'm not disagreeing with charging a Parks and Rec Impact Fee, but I have, I have trouble with the math that was used in this study. And so you might not be the person to be able to actually explain, because according to the information that has been provided to us, we still have 40.94 acres that are undeveloped. And that I can see that we would charge an impact fee to develop those acres as needed. And I also understand that we would be adding acreage as needed, but the math that they used was off of the current acreage that we already own, using land that is both developed and undeveloped.
So are you saying that the land acquisition fee is too high?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that the math is bad in this report, and I have a problem with this study.
Well, I might not have said that quite correctly. Do you think that it's being applied to too many acres, and that the acres that we already have should not be included in the land acquisition numbers?
Correct, because we're not acquiring that land, we already possess it. If we are going to acquire an additional 76 acres, then absolutely that would make sense to apply those numbers, but that's not what is being put forth through this study.
I understand, I was wanting to be sure I was following your thinking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mike, any comments on that?
No, I, I'm trying to figure this out as we go.
But you'll, you'll do some research on it, or?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And Sheila probably has the answer to this, but, or, or it just, maybe it slipped by, but they're applying numbers in areas where I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, so they'll do the research and bring it back.
Okay, great.
Okay. Other questions? Larry?
Yeah, I had two questions. The first one is a clarification on when this would be imposed on a lot. We have a lot of subdivisions already approved, so I'm assuming this would apply to any lot that no construction has started on?
Well, there's a couple different options, and that would be part of the next agenda item in terms of the amendment to the fee schedule. One possibility is to make this effective immediately, which each new residential lot coming up, the fee would be, would be applied. Or it could have implementation date, where anything after that date would be applied. One of the things that we're also gonna talk about is when these fees are collected. There's been a little bit of variance on impact fees, and we're gonna be looking to standardize that for any new residential developments that come forward that don't have anything platted yet, all those fees would be accepted at the time of plat. So if their plat, phase one is 55 lots, the fees for 55 lots would be paid at the time of plat.
All right, and then my second question is really more for Sheila than you, but I'll still ask it, and that is the impact to out-of-town individuals who are using our services. I was hoping that would be addressed in here, that anyone who lives outside the city limits, how they will be impacted to help pay for this too. Otherwise, they're getting a free ride.
I, I can partly answer that question, and that's with the programming fees. We do have two different charge rates for, let's say, for athletics, if you have a child playing soccer. There's a resident rate and then a non-resident rate, and that is based on individuals that live within the corporate limits of Zebulon.
But I was assuming she would approach that and talk about how those fees may increase as well.
Potentially.
Let me add right there, because this goes along with that. There, there has been some reticence in the past from Recreation Department to make the fees excessive for out-of-town, because they think what it'll do is deteriorate the participation in our programs. I'm not saying I agree with that, but I'm saying that historically, that has been a problem. I know that I, for one, had always thought those fees should be a little bit higher, and... and they've never wanted to do that because again, they don't want to run people away from these programs. And Beverly, you may remember some of this conversation in the past or not, I don't know, but I, I agree with you that they should come along somewhat with their fair share instead of getting a free ride.
I would think that with the increase in our population, that they should be given like the first priority of, of funding these programs anyway. So the numbers should take care of themselves at some point without relying on folks that's living outside the, the limits. I can see where in the past maybe we depended on those because we didn't have enough revenue generated with our own folks in the city limits, but I don't think that'll be a problem.
I think one thing to see, excuse me, but I, I believe one thing to see is what are those ratios now?
Yeah.
And, and I'm sure that, that our Parks and Rec Department can provide us with that information. I understand what you're saying, but I have no way of knowing, none of us do. I mean, do we have, for example, in the softball leagues or the baseball leagues, 60% from outside of town or the 60% from inside of town? We don't know. And so I think that's useful information if, if you could ask her to provide that.
Yeah, I will do that.
But also I don't think that the people that are paying non-resident fees for, say, an art class, are, you know, they're there for the art class. So it's not like they're excessive, they're putting extra wear and tear on the facility because they are a non-resident. I mean, I can go to Roseville and use a park and I can go to Raleigh and use a park. And, you know, it's a sticky situation because somebody's got to pay for that park and it's falls on the municipality to upkeep those parks. But would I want to be restricted, like say I could not go to Umstead Park without paying an out-of, a, a non-resident fee? Like I, I just think that there's no good way to, to kind of make sure that non-residents aren't using, you know, in-town amenities.
We've never had a park fee.
Right. And, and nor would I want one.
What we have had is a fee to participate in the programs.
Right.
So, because you have to hire somebody to administer the program and then sometimes you have equipment or supplies or whatever the case may be. But just to come and say walk in the park or play frisbee?
Right.
Never, never had that.
And that's where the, the majority of what would be spending money on here is going to go towards, you know, of course, an aquatic facility would be a whole different animal, but to purchase and maintain parks, we're, we're doing that because we want to make sure that we have the level of service.
I also do have a question regarding your calculation question. Page nine, or eight, nine of the study. It shows, it shows that this study is based on a potential 132% increase in population between 2021 and 2031. And based on that, in order to maintain the approximate level of service, it would have to almost double, or, or it'd have to approximately double our existing Parks and Recreation.
Which is fine, but they're using a number that is incorrect. They're not using a correct number and I have a problem with that, which is not your fault at all. I just think that it's a problem with Tischler.
I, I don't, I don't necessarily think they're using their own number because what they're doing is they're using a baseline. So they're taking the 76 acres, creating a baseline and giving you a number of 596 and change.
I, I understand what's being done. I just don't agree with saying that that's.
So that's the current level of service.
I'm sorry?
That's the current level of service.
I won't get into a debate here, okay?
No, I, I'm trying to understand too.
Well, I think that this is kind of like why we're here is to discuss this and, and have an understanding. Like I certainly am not trying to like get into a heated debate, but you know, like it's good for us to have an understanding of, of what it is that we're talking about.
All I'm saying is, what I want to happen is to let each person finish their statement before somebody else jumps in.
So, so what I was saying is if you take that 76, 76 acres and extrapolate it out, they're saying that to, for a cost to purchase any acre is $60,000, right? So they're saying we currently have 76 acres and change. So if we used to do all that math, it comes out to $196 per person for those 76 acres. That's our base current level of standard, or current, yeah, level of service. From there, they're doing that same thing based on the developed acreage, doing the same math, and then at the end they're adding all that up. That's getting our current level of service. Then we're adding that number to say at 132%, we need to increase our fees to whatever that number was, right? So that's what I, that's what I'm reading that as. I may be wrong, but that's how I'm seeing that, is that they're taking these numbers as our baseline and then upping them by 132%. Is that what you're seeing?
That's correct.
Where, where's the multiplier of 132%? What page is that on? The multiplier of 132%?
The population increase is 132%.
Yeah, but where's, where's that multiplier in here?
That is page.
Page eight.
Eight, I believe. And those were the population estimates that came out of the Parks and Recreation study, which realistically are probably a little on the conservative side.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, the fees proposed are based on per-person population increases.
I have one more question and that is on page four, can you explain a little bit more about the site-specific credit? I'm assuming that that means that a developer can donate land? And is there some kind of rubric for how that all works out? Because it says that there's a developer reimbursement for dedication of land or construction of system improvements. So they can do that and then the houses within that development aren't going to be subject
They would not be subject to that fee based on the scale and size of those improvements that are being provided. So it could be a combination of an impact fee plus improvements.
So they would take like, say, the $60,000 per acre and distribute that amongst whatever the number of people that are going to be in the development to kind of offset the actual 30, whatever the, the fee is that we're going to charge per?
Let's say a development comes in and their calculations have, let's say, 100 or $600,000 worth of impact fees and they donate an acre of land to be used as a trailhead for a greenway as an example, that 60,000 could be deducted from that 600,000.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
One concern that I have, and you sort of touched on it, is when do the fees go into effect? Now, I think if we have the fees, I'd like to see them charged, but the concern I have is that if a developer comes in here and says, comes to your department and says, okay, what are my fees for this 200-home development? And so they run the numbers on all of their development and say, okay, we can make this work. And then all of a sudden, those numbers jump significantly. How do you think the best way that we could manage that?
There's several different options and this situation is not unusual. Every time we adopt our fee schedule as part of our budget, those changes become effective on July 1. So a lot of developers know to keep an eye on those particular, particular fee changes. One potential option is to put an implementation date when the budget modification is approved on when these would become effective. That would provide further heads-up to the development community that these fees will be collected beginning on such-and-such date. We may see an influx of new plats come in, in the interim, but it's something that they could start taking in consideration.
Well, I think they need to have fair forward warning, if you will, because again, when they came in, they ran their numbers based on what was applied. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but this fee is fairly significant compared to a lot of the other fees that, that are in the budget.
Um.
With regard to developers.
Yeah. Comparatively, it's, it's an additional $2,500 per dwelling unit.
Right.
Which, in the grand scheme of things, in the context of other communities within Wake County, as well as in the context of some of the other fees that we charge, it's, it's an additional fee. And a lot of the developers I work with, they don't like any, they don't like five-dollar increases.
Oh, I know that.
And they, we did send this out as part of our public hearing notification, as part of our email blast, which a lot of the development communities included in that as well.
Well, my comments are not meant to really push back on the fee, it's the methodology for implementation.
Yeah.
Because I think that's important not to just drop a bomb. We need to work, work with it somehow.
And that's, that's one of the questions that comes up and timing as part of the next agenda item.
My, my concern would be kind of back in line with you, Mike, is they're going to up the price of those homes regardless, waiting for that fee to come in and they're going to pocket the change. If we give them 60 days, you know, three months, whatever it is, they're going to up-charge regardless because they're developers. If you come in there and say you, it's effective immediately, they don't have the opportunity to pocket that.
Well, I don't happen to believe that profit is a bad thing.
I, I don't disagree, but at the same time, if, if they've already budgeted a number and we're giving them an opportunity to make above that number just because we're trying to make a fee for the town, we're doing a disservice for the citizens to say, well, now the developer gets to pocket that because we weren't quick enough to recover that. So it's kind of a deferred fee that we're just tossing over the fences, saying, oh, I hope it comes back to us. So that's kind of my thought process on that, is it should be immediate in my book, but.
Okay. All right. Let's see if anybody else has any other comments.
I have a few.
Okay, good.
So this was printed August 2nd. So all of the numbers here are based on this year's numbers? Or are these numbers that this was started last year and all these numbers? Because the cost from last year versus this year, these, these cost numbers would be completely different.
These numbers were created in, kind of as a parallel process with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I can tell you that the $60,000 an acre is fairly current compared to what municipalities within Wake County have paid for Parks and Recreation land.
Okay. So the, part of my next question is, so, and I believe this is what y'all were just talking about, is when do we update this? Are you saying this would be a line item on the budget, so every year it gets reassessed? So as costs go up, God forbid there ever be another pandemic and we have more cost increases, will we have time to react to those changes and get that implemented quick enough?
Yes.
I guess that's, okay. It also states on here that this is to maintain levels. So we're happy with where we're at and we're not looking to improve our levels of Parks and Rec? Just maintain the level of service?
Yeah. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan actually did an analysis of where we're at in terms of level of service and we are doing really, really well compared to a lot of other communities that they, they've reviewed.
Okay.
I don't have those exact figures, but I know that we're raising the bar, the bar pretty high for a lot of others.
Okay.
And a lot of that goes to the credit of the Parks and Recreation staff, the maintenance of the parks, as well as the opportunities, the number of parks, the resources that we have. It's not just concentrated on one thing. It's a, it's a pretty broad distribution of opportunities.
And then my last question is, why less for the multifamily than a single family?
That is based on the impact analysis that the company did, which is typical. It's based on per person and the number of people that live in multifamily, based on US Census, is less than what lives in a single-family detached.
Okay. But if we looked at the one chart that you had, Roseville and Clayton, they charge the same amount for each. These are all being done by developers, correct? One is going to be passed on to the, the single-family home buyer, the direct citizen here in Zebulon. The other one is going to be paid for by whoever's going to be the landlord of these units. Am I correct?
Yeah.
So the landlord, the business, they're getting off cheaper than the single-family home buyer that's trying to set roots here in Zebulon. You see what I'm saying? So I don't quite understand why Mr. Landlord Developer gets off cheaper when he doesn't really care about Zebulon, he cares about making a buck. Whereas I'm building a house, I care about my community, I'm going to use my facilities, I want to keep them nice. I'm okay with paying that. Does that make sense?
That's, that's one of the complications that comes from impact analysis is the justification behind that is typically translated back to the numbers of persons per dwelling unit. And the numbers of persons per dwelling unit based on the US Census is lower for multifamily dwelling units. But conversely, you might have a building that has 100 units in it versus a neighborhood that only has 100 units in it. So the footprint impact on the two is substantially different.
But the impact from the residents of those facilities is also typically significantly different.
Yeah. If you have a 100-unit residential subdivision, you might have 269 individuals. Where a 100-unit apartment building, you only have 237 individuals living there. So goes back to the per-person costs associated with it.
That's 200, how much, 269?
269 for 100-unit residential.
People that really care about their community and 239 that are only here temporarily. And so if they go out and vandalize the equipment that costs us more money to repair or replace, they don't really care because it's not their home, they're renting.
That's, we can't regu, or we can't regulate intent, but.
I understand that, but my point is we're letting off this developer that doesn't care about Zebulon as much. He cares about renting his units.
Well, the property taxes associated with those multifamily developments typically far exceed the taxable value per acre than the single-family residential as well.
Okay. I've said my piece. I'm good.
All right.
Yep.
Other comments from any board member, either board?
All right. Well, I can add one thing on, on that, just for people to keep in mind. So when you're thinking about impact fees, the courts require there to be a rational nexus and rough proportionality between the, the use and the assessed fee. So doing it on like population counts like that is a pretty common way to do it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments from either board? Other comments now from anybody in the general public? All right. Close the public hearing and refer the matter to the planning board and go to budget fee schedule update.
Okay. This is the last of the agenda items for the joint public hearing and a continuation, essentially, of the previous discussion. The staff is proposing to remove the $500 greenway impact fee from our existing budget schedule and replace it with the recreation impact fee with dollar figures as noted for $3,000 per dwelling unit for single-family and $2,500 per dwelling unit for multifamily. Once again, this would be paid all at one time, specifically at the time of plat for any new residential developments moving forward. Part of the reason for that is it provides consistency with all of our development fees in terms of impact fees. That way we don't have one neighborhood paying it, breaking up as part of building permits. It also. It also allows for timely construction. You have situations where these would be applied towards a greenway, towards a soccer field. This gives us the opportunity to realize those funds and start that construction process. So when individuals do move into those residential homes, those recreation amenities are already there as opposed to putting a tax, or overtaxing the existing facilities while we wait for new ones to be constructed. Finally, I have wonderful staff and having different fees charged at different times for different neighborhoods would be very taxing on our staff. This simplifies the permit process for them. We know specifically impact fees are charged at the time of plat, building fees are charged at the time of building permit. It also simplifies it for the development community because then they know specifically, okay, I will need to make sure that I have these fees set aside for each time I come in with a plat and it'd be based on the number of lots associated with that plat. And I'm available if you have any questions for this final.
Questions from either board? Questions or comments from the general public? Okay, we'll close that public hearing and refer the matter to the planning board. So I would ask from the town board, a motion to adjourn.
Stand low.
Adjourn. Mike?